Again, we'd like to welcome everybody this morning. This is our last meeting in November for the year 2016. I can't believe it. I made a vow in January I'd lose weight. I guess the only I didn't say what year, so I'm still safe. But we do welcome you to our meeting this morning. And thank you for coming to the swearing in ceremony. Again, at this time, if you've just joined us, if you will please cut off anything that makes a noise, beeps, buzzes, or somehow would distract us. With that being said, would you please stand for the invocation and the pledge? Commissioner Jones.
Father God, we thank you for this Thanksgiving season. God, we're so thankful for the things that you've done, Lord. We truly believe that our nation was standing in the balance, and you chose to give us another chance. And we know, God, that it's not the person that you put in the White House, but it's your spirit and you moving that makes the difference in our country. So, Lord, we thank you that even this week will be a time of enjoying our family, enjoying friends, and for always giving you thanks and everything. And we welcome the new commissioners. We ask that you bless this board, bring unity to this board, and give us wisdom and guidance in all we do today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again. We want to welcome you here and that you could join us today. I believe Mr. Rick Calbert is with us. Welcome, Chief. Is there anybody else? I thought Alex was here earlier. Perhaps he will join us, but welcome. I will call the meeting to order, and our first order of business is reorganization of the board. It's time to elect a chair.
Madam Chair, make a motion to elect Commissioner Jones as chairman.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Is that fine with you, Ms. Jones?
I'll step to the plate. I wasn't lobbying for it, but I will be glad to serve, as always.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Ms. Jones to serve as chairman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have the election of the vice chair.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that Commissioner Bill Chapman be our vice chair for the coming year.
Second. All right, I'm sorry. We have a motion and second on the floor. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Chair?
Would you like to finish today, or you want me to take over now? If you would like to finish.
What's the matter?
That's fine.
You want me to finish today? All right. Okay. All right, first, we'll consider the additions and deletions. Do we have any addition and deletions to the agenda?
Proud to announce that we do not, Madam Chair.
All right, I do have one thing to add. I've been talking with Melinda Gates, and we have a NERDA grant, I think we're looking to try to get, so if you will, we'll put it under my name. But that's the only addition. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition and deletion?
So moved.
Second. All right, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, at this time, we will have public comment. Anyone is welcome to join us at this time. If you want to talk about something that is on the agenda, it's on the agenda, you will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, if there's something else that's on your mind that you want to discuss, well, then you certainly can bring it up. But if anything is on the agenda at this time, you're welcome to come up and discuss it. You will also have an opportunity when that item comes up, you will have an opportunity to discuss it then. But is there anyone that would like to have public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move forward. Are there any items that you won't remove from the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next, we have the Waste Management EAL.
Madam Chair, acknowledging my conflict of interest, I will file the proper form with the clerk. I will abstain from the vote.
All right. I need a motion to adopt the Waste Management EAL. So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, on behalf of staff, we want to welcome Commissioner Nipper and Commissioner Anderson, and let you know that we look forward to working with you and that we're available for anything you may need to make your job easier. So never hesitate to call on us anytime. So welcome, and again, we look forward to it. First item under admin is a donation of books from Grit and Grace, and Ms. Kim Kirby is here to represent Grit and Grace.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much, and good to see everyone, and congratulations to the new commissioners.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, and the new chair elected to serve, and Madam Chair. We appreciate you having us here today and allowing us this time. We did this last year. We presented the book based on our production, and we're doing it again this year. We have four books to dedicate to the libraries of Walton County. And with me are Brandon Elkins, he is a board member, and he was our director, Ronnie McBrayer, who is the author of the book and the production, and Matt Carpenter, who is also a board member. So I just would like to take the opportunity to present these four books, and they're labeled on the inside to be given to the Funak Springs Library, Gladys M. Milton Library, the Freeport Library, and Coastal Branch Library. So on behalf of Grit and Grace, we appreciate your support. We appreciate being Walton County's official Folklife Production, and we appreciate being able to preserve our history. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kim.
Ms. Kirby, can those books be purchased?
Yes, they can. We have books and CDs for the production. Our, probably the easiest way is to email info@gritandgrace.org, or call 270-7008. And that's area code 850-270-7008. And you'll get me, and I'll take care of the book order, or the CD order. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair. The next item is regard to the commission, board, and committee assignments, and Ms. Hineaux is going to kind of weave us through that.
Commissioners, is that time of year again to reappoint the commissioners served boards and committees? You have the list in front of you? And if anyone wants to maybe come off of a board and someone else pick it up, now would be the time?
I'm happy with mine. I know there are one or two that I've been in office 10 years and have never met yet. So, you know, like the Public Safety Coordinator Council, I don't think we have met. The Regional Utility Authority meets very rarely. So I'm fine with all of mine unless somebody wants one.
I'm okay with mine.
I'd like to come off of the TDC. I've enjoyed it. I've served a year. It's been great under the leadership of Jay Tusa. But I would like to, you know, like someone else to share and have the same learning curve that I did. So...
So which commissioner would like to serve on the TDC? Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
And then I have Northwest Florida Regional Transportation Planning Organization, if anyone would like that. I will continue, you know, but it's up if anyone would like to do that.
I've already got it. Can I do it?
Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I do.
And that's all for me.
Okay, and then at the very end of the page, of course, the chairman of the board serves on the canvassing board, which will be Commissioner Jones, and the EDA, Commissioner Jones. So we're going to add those to your list.
Thank you very much.
So if everything is good, then we'll need a motion and a second to approve these appointments, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item are under Public Works, item number 22, and I think there are about four of these, are requests to award, approve, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract number 016-012 for the Artificial Reef Construction and Deployment Service with David M. Walter, doing business as Walter Marine, in the amount of $799,998.40. This is a NERDA project that we had previously approved. This is approval of the contract, so we can put the folks to work in constructing this project. We would recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item, number 23, is very similar request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 016-013 for Artificial Reef Construction and Deployment Services, again with David M. Walter doing business as Walter Marine, in the amount of $340,542.30. Another NERDA project that has been through the process and is down to the point where we would like to engage Walter Marine to move forward with the construction.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Once again, request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 016-035 for Artificial Reef Construction and Deployment with David M. Walter doing business as Walter Marine for $168,000. Very similar to the first two requests.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Next item, once again, is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 016-036 for Artificial Reef Construction and Deployment Services with David M. Walter doing business as Walter Marine, in the amount of $340,542.45.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion among the board? Seeing none, all those, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to award and approve and authorize the chairman to sign contract number 016-037 for the Hewitt Bio Stormwater Retrofrit with the lowest responsive responsible bidder, RBM Contracting, in the amount of $818,797.50, using the designated FY14-15 infrastructure funds in conjunction with FY16-17 TIF funds to account for the remaining balance. Commissioners, this is a stormwater project that had been approved earlier to be designed through TIF funding, or through our infrastructure funds. We're asking now that we move this project forward to construction utilizing the remainder of those infrastructure funds and the balance to come from the 16-17 TIF funding. Again, this was one of the projects that was highly rated to move forward in our earlier stormwater assessments, and so we're pleased to be at the point that we can move it to construction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
That's all we have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tusa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'd like to echo Mr. Jones' remarks earlier, and welcome Ms. Nipper, Commissioner Nipper, and Commissioner Anderson. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Walton County is truly an amazing place. I've been here for seven months now, and I have thoroughly enjoyed every moment of being here, and I'm looking forward to working with the both of you. And we'll get some meetings scheduled kind of after the holidays, when everybody kind of gets back to work, and bring you all up to speed on what the TDC has going on. If there's anything that I can do, or my staff can do, to help you transition into your roles, just ask. We're here for you. Two gen items today. Item 27, Clay Atkinson, TDC council's going to take, and item 28, Brian Kellenberger is going to take. So, and I don't have any updates today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tusa. Clay Atkinson, TDC attorney for the record. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Congratulations to the new commissioners. We welcome you to the board. We'll have an opportunity to meet with you both, and Mr. Anderson will be seeing you at our first meeting coming up in December. The first item of business we need is in line with your organizational meeting. We need two motions today. We need one, a motion to appoint the chairman of the Tourist Development Council per our policy. That is something that the Board of County Commissioners has retained as a right to do itself. You can defer that right to the TDC, but historically, this board selects our board chairman. So we're asking you to do two motions today. One, to appoint our chairman. Second, a motion to appoint our vice chairman.
I move we elect Tim Norris as chairperson for the TDC.
All right, I have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Norris. Is there discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I will let you know that Mr. Norris is a seat that you will be reconfirming for an additional four-year term in December. He has been renominated by his elected agency, so he will be able to continue to serve in that role. We now need a motion for vice chair.
I move that we elect Tony Anderson as vice chair of the TDC board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion among the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And so we'll be back with you in your last meeting in December with the appointments that have been recommended by the selection committee to fill the seats that are being vacated on the TDC this year by people whose terms run at the end of December 2016. There'll be three appointments in addition to Mr. Norris being reconfirmed at that time. We'll likewise be presenting you some follow-up. If you recall, we did a strategic plan update with Dan Fenton earlier. The board had approved a number of changes there. We simply have some policy documents we'll be presenting to you that outlines the TDC council structure and the seat composition. We wanted to bring those back to you. We'd like to get through our December meeting, as well as give Mr. Tusa a chance to meet with the new commissioners before we present that. So that'll be your last meeting in December. Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too. Mr. Kellenberger.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Business for us today is to request approval to accept the proposal for task order TDC 16-008, and this is for repair and improvements to the multi-use path wooden bridges. Each one of our legs, we have metal spans at most of them, and they have wooden approaches to them. They're getting old, taking a lot of repair, and in need of replacement. So this is a task order for the design and permitting to get those projects moving forward.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Ms. Nipper?
I do. Is there a concern to make sure that these are harmonious, that we're starting to move towards making a solid, pleasing 30A?
Yes, ma'am, it is. We have a project undergoing right now that is the Western Lake Bridges Project, and so this new design and permitting for these wooden approaches will be the same design as those approaches. So we'll have a standard out of design all the way down 30A.
Is this going to start right away? Is it going to be?
The design and permitting will probably take a couple of months, depending on how quick we can get it done, and then in relation to the start of the summer season, we might delay the actual construction until after the summer season.
Okay.
But we'll see how the design and permitting goes.
I just didn't want it to be us to be right in the middle of it during the summer season.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone in the audience?
Madam Chair, question for Brian. Where are we at on Redfish?
On Redfish?
Aren't we, didn't we have that scheduled to come in to do some, put a bridge in there?
For the road, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, that'd be a Public Works project, so...
Have we got anybody from Public Works in here? Wilmer? Buddy? I'm sorry, I figured you might have something to do with that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Ain't there going to be a pedestrian thing right there, next to it?
Yes, sir, there is. We have a metal span over Big Redfish, and then a wooden span over Little Redfish. So the approaches to the metal on Big Redfish will be redone, and then the wooden one over Little Redfish.
Thank you, Buddy.
Commissioner, we're scheduled to start that project post Labor Day.
Next year.
Seventeen, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
While you're up here, though, just make sure that we do everything we can to let businesses know, and to, you know, put signs out so that they know they can go down to the business, or whatever. And then if we could do like a drive to, you know, maybe visit and let them know, let the businesses know somehow, communication...
Yes, ma'am.
...the best we can. So they want...
We learn a lot from Drake River Lake.
That's okay. We're all learning every day, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing to propose an ordinance to provide for the amendments to the Walton County Code, Chapter 19, Section 19.76, add velour on taxation, and this is an additional homestead exemption for certain qualified senior citizens. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Commissioners, I was approached by Patrick Pilcher. We have in place a additional homestead exemption per statute for elderly folks. However, the statute requires them to come in and re-report their income every year. Patrick intimated to me there's, it causes heartache when folks forget to do that, quite frankly, or just don't remember they have to do it. So the statute does allow for us to waive that yearly reporting requirement. It will save Patrick's office some money to have him to process those every year, and he would ask us to pass an ordinance, amending our ordinance, to allow for the waiver of the yearly reporting. They have, still have to come in and qualify initially, but they don't have to come in and yearly report.
Counsel, is there any requirement that, say, five years from now, 10 years from now, there are circumstances, changes that may take them out of that? Or how is, how do you gauge it to make sure that it is in fact legitimate?
You can, you can require, as part of the waiver, you can require a five- or 10-year reporting period if you choose to do so. But again, we're not talking a significant number of, we're talking, I think his estimate was he would save somewhere between $3,000 and $3,500 a year. It's not a significant number of folks that have this exemption.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. It's open up for public discussion. Does anyone have anything they want to add or ask? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. All right, now I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do you want to put a time limit on it? All right, motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the next item is a request to approve a special meeting for the purposes of an executive session or shade session on December 13, 2016, at the South Walton Courthouse Annex at 2:30 PM, or as soon as possible to that time, to discuss Goodwin versus Walton County, Florida, case number 3, colon, 16, dash, CV, dash, 0364, dash, MCR, dash, CJK. And the attendance at this meeting would be the Board of County Commissioners, Bill Chapman, Melanie Nipper, Sarah Commander, Tony Anderson, and Cecilia Jones, Larry Jones, the county administrator, Mark Davis, county attorney, Sidney Noisy, assistant county attorney, Tim Warner, Bill Warner, and David Theriak, who are special counsel to the county for this case. The meeting will be recorded by a certified court reporter. The court reporter will prepare a verbatim record of the meeting, which will be sealed until the conclusion of the litigation. And pursuant to Florida statutes, this executive session would not be open to the public. We'll just need a motion and a second to conduct the executive session.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Let me clarify, because we do have a 3 o'clock...
We should not be more than 15, 20 minutes.
Okay, that's what I thought, because we have a 3 o'clock TDC.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioners, the next item is basically just to make sure we're doing this right, but we need a motion, we're asking the staff, or asking you to authorize the sale of a piece of county-owned property. I've given you the property ID numbers. It's near Sexton Road in Mossy Head and New Harmony area. And what we'll need is a motion to find that the property is valued at less than $15,000. And included in that motion will be a request to authorize staff to solicit bids per the Florida statute. You visited this one at the last meeting. We just want to make sure the motion's correct.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Being brand new, I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
And I know things are going fast, but it...
A little bit, a little bit.
But it gets easier.
Ms. Nipper?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chapman?
The only thing I have is I want to wish the staff and the commissioners a happy Thanksgiving, along with our public and our citizens. Hope you have a nice, safe, enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday.
Ms. Jones?
I just ditto that. Thank you. Ditto that. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
I do have two items. I would like to request that at our next, whenever we recycle cars or whatever, if there is a car that perhaps the EDA could use, that would save an enormous amount of money that the EDA saves, that spends on travel expenses. If we had a vehicle that somehow that could be converted to the EDA, that would, that would save some expenses.
And in the meantime, do we have one that we could loan, you know, just that sits at the, you know, surplus? Thanks. Thanks.
I don't know that we, do we need to vote on that, Mr.? Okay. I'll make that motion. I'll step down. Somebody make...
Tony seconded it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass.
Motion carries. Thank you. My next item, Melinda, are you out there somewhere? There she is. We have an opportunity, I'm going to let you come up and tell it, because I'm going to get it wrong, you know?
Yes, we have an opportunity with the NERDA project.
Hang on just a minute. Ladies, for y'all that don't know her, this is Melinda Gates.
She is our... Coastal Resource Liaison.
Coastal Resource Liaison. I work in the Environmental Department. The Natural Resource Damage Assessment, which is associated with the BP oil spill money, they have recently put out an advertisement for new projects and to update any old projects that are on their list. So with this opportunity, the deadline is December 5th, which is why we're kind of on a time crunch here. But there are two projects that have come to my attention. One is a regional artificial reef project, which would include Escambia County, Santa Rosa County, Okaloosa County, Walton County, and Bay County to do some of our activity that we're already doing with deploying either prefab modules or potentially vessels in our permitted sites. So this would just give us the opportunity to put in this, this project for consideration for funding. The other project that has come to my attention is the, the estuary program, the National Estuary Program. Walton County signed a resolution of support quite a few months ago regarding this particular project, and it would just be another funding opportunity to allow for a national, national estuary program to come to this area, which would help our bay.
So we need a motion, or I will make the motion that we go out and apply for these grants.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second, any other discussion?
Is this in addition to the, is this in addition to the four that we have approved today?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so the ones that we approved today are current, they are a NERDA project, a Natural Resource Damage Assessment project, which we did receive money for. So this would be another grant application that we're going to apply for, for potential funding.
On a much larger scale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, what's your pleasure? Do we have a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Alright, thank you very much. As always at this time of year, on behalf of the Board, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and don't forget Saturday, 27th Annual Hometown Christmas. I'd like to see each one of you at the fairgrounds. If you have never been, it's an absolutely enjoyable day, and you'll see friends and neighbors that you haven't seen in five or six years. So please join us at the fairgrounds Saturday from 8 to 5. We'd love to have you there. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone at this time that would like to public comment? Alright, seeing none. Who? Oh, I'm sorry, Bob, did you want to? I didn't want to miss you this time, I'm sorry.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H U D S O N. I'd like to express my appreciation to Mark Davis and to Alex Hawford. As you're aware, the Taxpayers Association monitors a lot of different things. One of the things that we've been looking at lately has been the issue of public availability of closed executive session transcripts. It appears that we haven't had a solid process of making those available to the public. In conversation with Mark today, as with Alex today, it appears that we're working towards a process that makes those records available at conclusion. It does appear that some of these cases go on forever, waiting on one little thing or somebody to act, and I would, in talking to Mark, it appears that there's a possibility that the Board could close some of these cases by action of the Board, and I would encourage you to do that. I think you need the public to be aware of how you deal with issues and how you discuss all of those legal ramifications of things that are there when you're being sued. It is amazing to me the number of cases that you have, where they're generated, and the, what I would call successfully, successful conclusion of most of those cases on the county's part. A lot of people are not aware of that. So I'd like to thank Mark and Alex, and I'd like to encourage the Board to look to make those records available as soon as possible, wherever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. If you would come forward, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Mike Boor, B-O-U-R-Q-U-E. We're in a fire drought situation, and the realtors and bankruptcy, people who have vacant lots are not keeping the underbrush clean and the leaves. And if you notice these fires they have in Kentucky and Tennessee and North and South Carolina and Northern Georgia, it's not the trees that are burning, it's the underbrush and leaves. Is there code enforcement to make these realtors and property owners at least clean the underbrush and leaves?
County would have, but the Forest Service does have a way to, to mitigate against possible fire damage in, in lots that are unkempt. Yes, sir, you would need to contact the Forest Service if you know a particular area.
So the, the realtors developed lots, and they went bankrupt, and now the lots are overgrown, the underbrush and leaves are accumulating, so there's no chance of getting them to clean that up?
No, sir, not, not through the county.
Not my job.
Anyone else? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, do you want to take a break before we land the issues, or you'd want to go straight in, into it? Alright, we will move forward into our, our Planning and Development Services. Mr. Dice.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items on the agenda. The first item we have is to request, we're requesting the Board authorize us to move forward on an amendment to the Land Development Code. And I'll ask Vivian to come up and, and present this. But basically, as you all know, the process, we are requesting us to move forward with the advertising. It will obviously be back in front of the Board again if it, if it goes forward at a public hearing, and so this is for the first step in that process.
Good morning, Vivian Shammel, Planning Department. This is a request to authorize staff to advertise an amendment to Chapter 2.01.03F of the Walton County Land Development Code, providing for neighborhood commercial uses in the rural village land use category. Currently, there is an inconsistency between the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code language, which prevents the development of neighborhood commercial in rural village. So this is a request to create consistency between the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. Do you have any questions?
Just asking us to allow you to move forward with the advertisement?
Yes.
Correct. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Alright, motion carries.
Madam Chairman, the next item is a request to continue the public hearing for the first amendment to the Seaside Billout Agreement. Staff is requesting this to be continued until the, to the following meeting, which is going to be scheduled for November 22nd.
This is November 22nd.
I'm sorry, be scheduled for the next meeting in December, I believe.
December the 13th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, the next item on our agenda is a, this is the first reading for an amendment that the Board authorized several months ago. It has gone through the process with the Planning Commission, and this is the first reading in front of, front of the Board. Essentially, in our code now for a simple lot split, it, it requires it to be a major development order application, which is very intense. It requires compatibility analysis and those kind of things. As staff looked at this, we feel like this is overkill for such a simple application, and the amendment you have in front of you removes that, that major development order application process, and we are requesting that this be approved. The Planning Commission also approved this at their, at their meeting as well.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so first of all, I need a motion to open.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second to open a public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Alright. Any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Now then.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Alright, next item is also a public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second, open the public hearing, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioners, the last item is a, it's regarding the settlement agreement we had with the Doon Lake Protection Zone Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. This is the follow-up for that, for the Land Development Code. I'm going to ask Matt Carpenter from our staff to come up and brief the Board on the particulars of this application, of this presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. As Mr. Dice said, this is the first reading for the ordinance to implement changes to the Land Development Code consistent with the recent adoption of the remedial Coastal Doon Lake Protection Zone Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. These are the implementing regulations for that policy change that the Board has already adopted, and this is the first reading, and we request that you would, if it be your pleasure, set the adoption hearing for December 13th at the South Walton Annex, on or after 5 PM.
Is there any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion in second to close the public hearing, all those in favor? Aye. Now I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, can I have one, just one update, if I may?
No! Your name is not Ronnie Bell.
My apologies. Madam Chairman, we've had some questions about the Matrix Group and the Land Development Code update. Just want to give an update. We had a, a conference call with them Thursday and talked to them and at length about the process and their progress, and they are making progress. There is a website, and we hope to put their progress on that website shortly. And when we do, we're going to ask it to be posted to the county website, but they are moving along. They are, I think they identified, they met with staff and the Commissioners several months ago. They identified 600-plus issues that they're currently looking at, that they're working on, and they have upcoming meetings scheduled for public input and public comments as well. And so I just want to tell you that it is moving along, and they are making progress, and we are mind-turning it to make sure it moves along as quickly as we can.
Very good.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dice, we've got two new Commissioners on here that weren't privy to the conversations with Matrix. They're kind of behind the eight ball on this. Would suggest staff at least bring the two up to speed as to what was basically covered during those meetings.
That's a great suggestion. We can contact them and meet with them and kind of go over some of the, the issues that we've, we've seen, and also try to convey the issues that you may have to Matrix as well. The, originally came and met with each Commissioner and talked to them about what they felt like were some of the issues with the, with the Comprehensive Plan, Land Development Code, and so we'll try to do the same thing for the new Commissioners as well.
Alright. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.